Hi, good evening and welcome to the City of Sharonville's regular council meeting. If everyone would please stand, we're going to have a moment of silent prayer and then the Mayor Hardman is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbie. Before we have our moment of reflection or prayer, I do want to take a moment to ask that we keep Bobby Fisher and his family in your prayers and then your thoughts. Many of you know, hopefully, Mr. Fisher, former member of our police department, former Assistant Safety Service Director here in Sharonville. He is retired chief of the city of Hilliard. So he has a very serious cancer diagnosis that he received very recently, and so he and his family are struggling and wrestling with that diagnosis. But I think if you know Bobby, I have a feeling he's probably as capable of handling that diagnosis in as positive a way as you can. So keep him, his family, in your thoughts as we just take this moment silently. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can all be seated now. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Coulter.
Here.
Mr. Lovett.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Naite.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Approval of the minutes from December 13th, 2022, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as written and distributed. Reports and communication, Mayor Hardman.
First of all, with regard to Mayor's court totals for December of 2022, we, in a total of $21,253.83 in through forfeitures, fines, and costs, and reimbursements, so I will make sure that the entire report is included within the minutes. One of the greatest jobs that I have in this city is working with the great people that we employ here, and unfortunately, or unfortunately for them, but unfortunately for us, several of them spend a lot of years with us and ultimately decide, well, it's probably time for me to retire. So I had the great pleasure of presenting proclamations last week to Kathy Wilkerson of our Parks and Recreation Department for her amazing 31 years with us as administrative assistant, and Rick Osendorff for his time as our mechanic in Public Works of 20-plus years. And I think one of the greatest things that we can say about Rick is how much he has probably saved the city as a result of his work as a mechanic back there. And I think as he affectionately lets it be known that the work of our snowplow starts in the garage, which is true, because if those machines that do all that work don't work, then we don't get our streets plowed. So, great job that he's done for us. We are very happy to have had him and happy to have Kathy with us as long as we have had them. I'm sure that we will probably see their faces around regardless, and so if you do see them, make that known. Their replacements are wonderful people, and hopefully will continue a great legacy of good folks that continue to work for the city, just like the rest of our great employees. We would ask if we could, at the end of our meeting this evening, have an executive session for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of real property. We will not have any decision as a council to make out of that. It is a discussion process.
Okay, Safety Service Director, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. Just the legislation this evening, and it's the Public Works and Fire Department show. There's six items in front of you this evening. Three of them are Public Works, which are the first three. So if Steve had come up and addressed all those, and Dan is in the batter's box.
Good evening. Two ordinances here relate directly to the snowplow and snow removal operations. While we do have a great mechanic's operation, we've got a great new mechanic onboard. We do have a truck that is aging, so I asked, we've got one ordinance in front of you today, for approval to go ahead and make the purchase of a new Freightliner dump truck. These are the larger dump trucks that we use for snow removal and truck loan program through the summer. We're asking for that as an emergency because truck ordering, the truck build takes a while, and we'd like to get that truck sooner than later. Second ordinance today is, well, yes, second ordinance today is for our standard yearly street programs, our 2023 street repair program, our 2023 carbon sidewalk program, and our street preventative maintenance program. These were all items that were in the 2023 budget that you all saw in the fall and approved in December. And finally, it would be the last ordinance I have in front of you today is contract authorizing our Safety Service Director to sign a contract for the purchase of rock salt for the next snow season to replenish that which we use this season. That was all bid out through the Swap 4G competitive day process. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Sunderland has the balance of the legislation.
Hello. Steve really appreciates when I come up here because I can make a dump truck with a snowplow look really, really cheap. Our first ordinance tonight for the fire department is the purchase of a Quint fire apparatus, and this was approved for the 2023 budget with a price tag of $1.3 million. And the current build time for fire apparatus is about 30 months, so that's a little hard to wrap your head around that we're looking to spend that now for a vehicle that won't be in our garage until, you know, quarter two of 2025. But that is currently where we're at. We do have that down as an emergency. We have been talking to the vendor, and the rate of cost has, or the rate of rise has slowed, but at any given time they can get a 9% or 11% price increase. So I'd like to get that contract in sooner than later. That even 9% gets to be a pretty big number when you're talking about $1.2 million. The next piece of legislation we have, again, this was approved in the 2023 budget, is to add to, supplement our bay heat at Station 86, put infrared in to try to balance out the freeze protection that is in the floor. And the third one is our agreement to provide emergency medical services for the Village of Glendale. They are going to have a modest price increase this year from the $60,000 for the year last year to up to $67,000 this year. The other piece of that legislation in regards to Glendale is to allow us to change that administratively going forward based on basically the market and our cost of doing this.
And that last item is in the legislation itself. There's one change from what the draft agreement that law committee had in front of them. Under fees and payments, Section 5, the last provision, Casey saw benefit in adding it to the fee schedule as well.
We need to do an amendment then on that?
No, I don't think so, only because it's within the contract. I think Jim, I don't know if I'm speaking for you, but wanted to make sure that it was just a slight modification to what law committee reviewed.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And that's all the legislation this evening.
Okay. For mine, while he's sitting out here, I would like to thank Public Works. In the deep freeze when we were all home in our nice, warm, cozy little house, they were not. They were dealing with frozen gas pumps. They were dealing with frozen ground, salt that wasn't going to work in those kind of temperatures. And it was just a fight. And I just want to thank you for, you know, making Sharonville always look good. Our streets were passable. People could get to work if they were so wanting to. So thank the guys for all their hard work. I know you guys put a lot of time and energy into it, so thank you. And tonight, we've been asked to do a voice vote. Due to some employment issues, OKI and Mr. Coulter cannot be on the same team. So we need to replace him at OKI meetings. Is there anyone that would like to do it, Mr. Lippert?
I'm happy to serve. I'm also happy not to serve if somebody else wants to do it.
Does anyone else want to?
Totally up to you.
But just for clarity, you sit on the Board of Directors, which meets four to five times a year, so.
Yeah. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So for voice vote, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Lippert? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And that does carry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lippert.
Do we want to designate an alternate since I was the alternate for Mr. Coulter?
Is there anybody that would like to be the alternate? Mr. Wilson?
I've done that position before, and so I'd be happy to as the alternate.
Okay, perfect. Is there a motion to make Mr. Wilson our alternate? So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mr. Lovett. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? So Mr. Wilson will act as the alternate. Thank you. Thank you. And that's all for my report. We'll go to Clerk of Council, Mrs. Buhy.
Hi, thanks. Just announcing the public hearing that is set for January 31st at 7:00 PM in this room, and that is regarding the creation of zoning code 1113.09.
Okay, thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
Thank you very much. I'm sure all of you remember last year, the first meeting of the year where I gave my annual report required by Ohio Revised Code 733.62, and it is that time of year again. So Mayor Hardman has started to give the monthly or biweekly totals for Mayor's Court. Just a total annual perspective, Mayor's Court has dealt with 74 criminal cases in calendar year 2022, as well as 1,212 traffic cases, the vast majority of which are traffic citations, driving under suspension, speeding, marked lanes violations, that kind of thing. There was less than 20 DUIs and less than 20 parking infractions included in that traffic total. The totals for the year 2022 provided by Mrs. Buhy, $247,123.95. So that's the, what goes on with Mayor's Court for the City of Sharonville. In regards to pending litigation, there are two pieces that I believe most council members should be aware of. We have the Code 51 appeal that is pending in Franklin County Common Pleas. I've been in communication off and on with the attorney that the city hired, the liquor law expert, and that's still going through briefing. And I don't know whether or not there will be an in-person hearing on that, or whether or not the Franklin County judge will just make their decision based on the briefs, but that is still pending, as well as a federal lawsuit pending, having to do with an Americans with Disabilities Act claim against the city. If you want more information on that, just approach me. A lot of it's privileged, so I don't want to talk about anything, but that case is still going through the discovery process with depositions and whatnot. So that's my report for the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions, feel free.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lippert? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Our Convention Center Director is here tonight to give us his report, Mr. Dowd.
Good evening, everybody. I had a little technical difficulty with my printer, so we have a digital copy, and I think, Terry, you mentioned that they could actually bring that up on the.
Yes, in their folder.
Oh, great, great. And if anyone wants a hard copy, I can get it to you. I'm here tonight to review the Convention Center's performance for 2022. 2022 continued the Convention Center's post-pandemic recovery. Our initial recovery began back in July of 2021, increasing our events that year from about 86 events in 2020 to 186 in 2021. I'm going to move. This year, we grew that number of events to 218 events. The biggest significant jump was in our average event attendance. This is really, this was shocking when I reviewed this. Our average attendance per event increased to eight, over 800 people, it's about 842 people, up from pre-pandemic levels of 500 attendees per event. So when we were at our peak in 2019, we had more events, but they were smaller. This year, we continue to grow to the events. We're still not at pre-pandemic levels for the number of events, but again, our attendance per event just skyrocketed to over 800. This growth in attendance mirrored the shift in our business, so we had a huge shift in our business. So historically, pre-pandemic, our events were Monday through Thursday. They were 60% to 70% of our events were Monday through Thursday. There were corporate meetings, banquets, and, excuse me, corporate meetings, banquets, and trade shows. Now the business post-pandemic is 50/50. 50% of our business is Thursday through Sunday, and that's why you see this jump in attendance. We're doing these large conventions and public shows Thursday through Sunday, and the corporate planner hasn't really come back at 100% yet. That will return, but I think the good news is we were able to kind of grow without that business returning yet. So we're growing business, and you'll see we're growing revenues higher than we expected. So that, those are all positive things. Shift to the financials. So the shift in this market segment allowed for us to grow gross revenues. This year, we were at $2.2,855,802. So we have not reached this revenue level since 2018. Our record year was 2019, and we were at $3.1 million. So the leaders, our revenue leaders, if we broke them down, our biggest one was our space rentals. We grew that to $1,121,522, up from 2021, $325,000, up from budget, $521,522. The food and beverage revenues equaled $392,815. They were up $251,990 from 2021 and $242,815 over budget. And finally, our commissions and our utility revenues equaled $240,877, up $143,213 from 2021 and $170,877 over budget. And that's a reflection of the event type. So the more events we get in the convention exhibit hall, the more utilities we'll have, and the more rent revenue, because it's our biggest leader for rental. It costs the most to rent the exhibit hall because of the size of the space. So our operating expenses did increase, $292,802, and this was really a reflection of the personnel and staffing increases that we needed. If you remember during COVID, we had a reduction. And then our facility expenses and our supplies and repairs and just our operational expenses for the facility grew as well. But a $292,802 increase in expense, but a significant growth in revenue. Our Convention Center fund is ended at $2,940,135, and this is a net revenue increase of $919,852. And that is after you deduct, we made a contribution to the general fund with the hotel tax revenue. We were over $1 million, so I think $46,599 was transferred, and then we transferred another $54,276 to our facilities restricted upkeep and capital fund. So that left us with a really healthy capital fund balance of $250,000 as we begin 2023, and then we'll get another $50,000 contribution from the county, usually receive that at the end of the first quarter. So that, that will put us in a healthy, just a healthy balance for both of those funds. Some of the capital projects that we addressed this year, I'm getting new glasses. I have a puppy, and he's, or she has ate both of my glasses.
Oh, it's kind of like the dog eating your homework.
No, a little more expensive. So, and I'm squinting a lot. The capital projects, the AV charging stations are in place now, if you've been over to the Convention Center. They turned out really nice. I am still investigating signage. I know everything, everybody's directed with their cell phone, and so maybe I'm overthinking it, but I think it would look nice if we had something, you know, there and with a signage that says, you know, here are the AV charging stations. But I know if you're, if you own that vehicle and you're going to get charged, it takes you right to the charging station. And then we did a bunch of upholstery. All of our furniture is, would be 11 years old this year, and, you know, think about all the wear and tear in our public spaces. So we redid, and it really turned out nice. We found this, it's so hard to find someone who does upholstery work nowadays, but they came in and got a piece at a time. They ended up doing 14 pieces of our sofas and our chairs, and they just look great. So when you come over to the facility, take a look at those, they look like they're brand new. And then we also, I only have a photo of one, I think this is the vacuum, but we have a, another new vacuum, and we also have a floor scrubber that we had to replace, so thank you for those. And then the other big, obvious capital project is the expansion. I took that picture this morning with my panoramic phone, and it really turned out really nice. So you can see, if those of you who have not been over, this is the original facility, stops right here, and then this is all of the expansion. So it really does double the size of our facility. We are scheduled to open in July right now of 2023, and what we've told our customers that want both sides of the facility is that if it's available, you got it, and if it's not, we'll continue to use the whole facility for your exhibitors. The tough thing has been to book incremental new business too early, because we don't want to, we don't want to fail. So we're looking at the fall for that, to take some of those new incremental clients that want both. But July looks very realistic now. Let me go back up to some of the incentives that we are, this is our big incentive right now for the new exhibit hall. We're partnering with all of our partners, well, some of our partners on Chester, Third Eye, our two hotel partners, and that we're offering this incentive that if you bring in citywide convention, that we're going to offer that space complimentary for that. I think the deadline to book that is, and I'm squinting, I think it's, I think you've got to book by the, by the middle of the chair.
6:23.
Yeah, by July. And so we're trying, we're running this ad in the Ohio, the Ohio Association of Executives publication monthly, and then we're also trying to run it on NPR radio. So it's worked. We've got a couple of events. Chief Sunderman and his team have helped, I think one of the first ones we booked, and that will be coming, I believe, this fall, and we're excited about that. Our, and I think you've heard me say this so many times, but the whole goal, obviously, is to grow, you know, to grow our business. You know, before we got the funding for the expansion and we were doing the studies, you know, we were turning away business from the exhibit hall. We were at 80% occupancy, you know, we couldn't get incremental. So this really will allow us to do two things. We can still maintain our current business, and we can add the incremental on the other side, so I can use the exhibit hall and have two groups happening at the same time. And then the other incremental is the group that comes in and needs all the space, which is really the priority one, so that's what we'll be targeting first. But we also, you know, for years, we have not been able to book from January to June on any weekend for the exhibit hall. That's, we're just, we're sold out every weekend through the first half of the year. And we kind of slow down, June and July, we pick back up in September, and then we're at it again. Usually the exhibit hall, you can't get in from September till the middle of December. So this will be a big, big win for us. I think we're going to have, you know, from what I'm seeing right now of the facility and the expansion, we're really going to have something to be proud of, and we're going to have something really easy to sell. And I think as we look at the increase in attendance from these events, it couldn't really happen at a better time. And I know, I think, a year ago or two, I said, well, I think we're fine with the parking, but I think as these numbers continue to grow, because that 800 number is with the existing facility. So as we get the expansion, that number's just going to grow, and so certainly we'll be keeping our eye on that. But right now, you know, we have supplemental parking, we're doing fine. Not everybody gets to park at the front door. Once we get the expansion open, we'll have three new entrances, and that'll help alleviate a lot of the frustration for anyone that has to park in the back. They'll now have a door to enter. So I know you hear some of those and have maybe experienced it on a Saturday, but those will be addressed as well. So, any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Love to see it grow. Now is our opportunity for residents that wish to be heard this evening. If you want to come up, give us your name and address, and you don't have to be a resident if you want to talk.
Tim Schmidt, 1-2, 215 Pickwick Place. First off, I want, since I haven't seen all of you people since last year, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody.
Missed you, didn't you?
I also want to, I also want to thank the road crews for the work they did. I know it was a tough job this year with the cold and the freezing and everything, but I want to thank you for a great job that your crew did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council committees, community development, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, we have a meeting of the planning, oh, thank you. We have a meeting of the Planning Commission tomorrow night at 7:00. There is no Board of Zoning Appeals meeting this month.
Okay. Community Services, Mr. Lovett.
Thank you. Report on file with Mrs. Buhy. Also, our next meeting is Wednesday, February 8th at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and Finance and Project Oversight, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, I will be working with Mr. McKeon on our schedule for the, all of 2023, and I'll send that out. Going on to Project Oversight, we did meet last month on December 13th. Essentially, we reviewed two items. We looked at the field zertile sidewalks. So as part of the discussion, some sidewalks, a little bit, will be installed by Hamilton County when we do the roundabout and the lane changes. We would be, Sharonville will do, look at what it would take to do the remainder portions, and we'll work on getting some idea of what that cost will be, but before anyone jumps and puts their walking shoes on, we're looking three, four, or five years away, so it will not happen anytime in the near future. Second item is we reviewed the Convention Center expansion. I don't need to go on that, you've just heard the report, so that's my report. Thank you.
Perfect. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Honored citizens, Mrs. Knight.
Yes, tonight I'm also honoring Public Works, but I want to throw the Fire Department and the Police Department in there, too, to thank them for keeping all the citizens in Sharonville safe. I know my friend, she was supposed to be here tonight to discuss her little nephew from Texas, threw a, put a drone in the pine tree across the apartments across from UDF, and the Fire Department came up and got it down for him, so thanks. I went, Suzanne and that crew, so she was coming, I was probably at school or something, so.
Yeah.
But again, thanks so much for all the hard work all three departments do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe some of our fire and police spent the night at the stations to make sure we were covered, and that is very much so appreciated.
I just want to comment on the fact that in 2023, we've skipped from rescuing cats from the trees to drones. I think that's kind of a significant change in our world, so.
What a shame Lieutenant Runyon wasn't on that call. Thank you. Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, thank you. There are five Tuesdays again this month, and so the next Law and Public Safety Committee meeting will be at 4:00 on January 24th, Administrative Conference Room. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank both our Chief of Police and Chief of Fire Department. of Fire Department for bringing Sonnet and Jack to the seniors' meeting. Very well appreciated, very well attended, great dialogue, and both of the dogs are just absolutely fantastic. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Rule suspension motions for first and only reading with immediate effectivity. Ordinance is 2023-01E, 2023-03E, 2023-04E, 2023-05E, and 2023-06E. First and only reading with 30-day effectivity is ordinance 2023-02. Is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Colter, second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And that motion does carry. We'll move to unfinished business, please.
It's the second reading of ordinance 2022-76, approving the recommendation of Planning Commission to adopt Sharonville Codified Ordinance 1113.09.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And now new business.
All right. It's a first and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023-01E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract to purchase a freightliner truck approved in the 2023 appropriations budget and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-01E? So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mr. Lovett. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023-01E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023-02, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts for the 2023 street repair program, 2023 curb and sidewalk program, and 2023 street preventative maintenance program.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-02? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023-02 has been approved.
Thank you.
First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023-03E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract to purchase highway rock salt for the 2023 through 2024 winter season to replenish the city's salt inventory and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-03E? So moved by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. Lovett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023-03E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023-04E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of an E1 Quint fire apparatus for the Sharonville Fire Department, approved in the 2023 appropriations budget and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-04E? So moved by Mrs. Knight, second by Mr. Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Seeing, Mr. Schmidt?
Just a real quick compliment to the Chief Sunderman. At Law Committee, we did an extensive evaluation of the options that we had and how we might be able to pay for this and what saving steps were taken. And I think in my mind, we saved several hundred thousand dollars by the chief's effort, and so very much appreciate it, and the thorough analysis and all the options was really excellent. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023-04E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023-05E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the installation of bay heaters for Sharonville Fire Department Station 86, approved in the 2023 appropriations budget and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-05E? So moved by Mr. Colter, second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023-05E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023-06E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an emergency medical services agreement with the Village of Glendale, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-08, or I'm sorry, 06E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023-06E has been approved.
This is another opportunity. If you would like to speak before counsel, come up and give us your name and address. Seeing none. Are there any other matters to come before counsel this evening? Mr. Lovett?
I just wanted to say real quickly, this past December, many of the people in this room up here donated to a local family within our community that we essentially were able to help provide five children Christmas and their parents. There is a thank you card here that they were sent, that they sent us, so feel free to come up and look at it if you want to, but it's much appreciated what everybody did who donated, and thank you very much, so.
And I can tell you, his wife's car and his truck were full. So thank you all. I mean, when you have five kids, it's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of stuff, so thank everyone, yes. Anybody else? Mrs. Knight?
Yes, I just want to, what Paul was saying about this past meeting at seniors, we had Jack come and do a demonstration with marijuana, and someone made a comment, said, didn't any of them find, he found it, but then he said, did he go around and sniff everybody's purse? And I'm like, no.
So the seniors are worried about that.
Yeah, so it was a great demonstration, and he did a great job. He's a beautiful dog, too. I didn't realize how beautiful he was.
That's a wild cruder.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I may have to join seniors now. I might take off on Mondays. All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session per the Ohio Revised Code 121.22G2 for purchase of property? Thank you. So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mr. Lovett. You have to do roll calls, sorry, babe.
It's been a minute. All right.
These new law directors, you know, they follow it to a T.
Yes, do I know. Roll call for going in is Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Colter?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lucas and Mr. McKeon will be joining us. We will not be doing any other business but adjourning after this. Thank you all for coming.